Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to a special meeting of the Richmond Common Council for Monday, September the 29th. Would we please stand for the predilegance in a prayer followed by Dr. Wright?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we humbly come before you this evening to do the task that you have before us, dear Lord. Guide us, protect us, correct us, direct us in all your ways, and we are praying for the least, the last, the lost, the hopeless, the helpless, the hungry, the homeless, the marginalized, the disenfranchised, the underserved, underrepresented, those that are not represented at all, and the voiceless, dear Lord. We are praying that we do what is in the best interest of the people who placed us in these positions and our community. In your precious Son, Jesus' name, by the power of the Holy Spirit, we submit this prayer to you. Amen, amen, and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Wright.
You're welcome.
Before we get started on the introduction of the business ordinances on our first reading, Mr. Emery, would you stand up for a minute, please?
Uh-oh.
I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate you on the award that you received. Mr. Emery was presented a 2025 Media Award for Excellence in Public Information and Education in Fort Wayne as part of the Indiana Judges Association. Congratulations.
Woo-hoo!
You're welcome. Thank you. Before we get started, Mr. Mayor, would you have something you'd like to tell us?
Yes, I do, Mr. Parker. A lot of things have happened since we last met on Wednesday, and a lot of good things financially. First, I'm going to hand this out. Thursday was a busy day last week. After I do this discussion, some of these financial points, I've also, we've asked Sheri Hemingway to come up from the Benefits Administration and talk about the police and fire pensions and clear up some stuff about those, too, as part of this. But first thing is, before you, you may recall last Monday, I opened the committee of the whole talking about Wayne County's low-hutter will tax, and my napkin math was about $640,000 would flow into the city next year. We finally, on Thursday of last week, we got our financial report from our financial advisor of the way the county passed that tax, how much would flow into the city coffers in 2026, and that's on the third page, the highlighted section for Richmond City. And you can see over to the right, under revenue combined, we're looking at $680,000 and change. So that's an estimate for 2026 of how much will flow into those two new funds that the controller created that'll help the street department, help us with matching grants for community crossing and just the street department overall. So that's a good plus. It's a good plus because that money will start flowing in in February, but this is just an estimate. It could be more or less. Also, when the city receives its 1782 notice in November, I'm not sure, we'll ask if we can go ahead and put this in the 2026 budget based upon this estimate. We usually do these things. She's nodding yes. So we can actually add this into the 2026 budget. So that's another $680,000 that will help with some of our shortfalls. That's one good news. So you can have, everybody gets a copy of that. The other thing is, last week, the Board of Works approved the fire protection contract for Wayne Township last Thursday, and that's $894,254, which is $79,000 more than 2025. So working with the Wayne Township trustee, using that formula, and the amount of money they collect, it goes in the fire department to have fire protection for the Wayne Township and the Two Mile Friends. So that $79,000 increase is another thing that, when we get our 1782 notice in November, we can add it into the budget for next year because we know we're going to get that exact amount because that's how much they exactly collect. That's a good thing. Board of Works also approved the Spring Grove Fire Protection Contract, and that totaled $78,589. I don't recall how much it was in 2025, and I never got a chance to look it up today, but it should be slightly higher. Again, it's kind of based on property taxes. So those are some good things. Sorry?
$62,000.
Okay, so then, there you go. So she found it. So $16,000 more, kind of the same thing again. So there's some revenue that we didn't expect. One of the things, other thing before Sheri comes up, one of the things I was looking at, there was a news article last week about the cigarette tax revenue. We have a small amount of cigarette tax coming in the general fund next year. In August alone, when they normally collect $18 million in cigarette taxes at the state, they collected $50 million in one month. August of last year was $18 million, now they collected $50 million. I think everybody thought with this tripled cigarette tax that fewer people would smoke, but evidently it's not the case. So kind of the same thing, sometime next year, we will receive quite a few more dollars in cigarette tax. I don't have the formula, and I couldn't find the formula quickly as to how much that will increase our coffers, but it gets spread among all the cities and counties throughout the state and rolls into the general fund, too. So kind of good news, bad news, that maybe people aren't quitting like they thought they would, but more taxes are rolling in, and there you go. So those are my comments about some budget things coming up. Busy day last Thursday. And if that's okay, I'll invite Sheri Hemingway to come up to talk about the police and fire pension, clear up some misconceptions from last time we met.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so the police and fire pension funds are specifically there to pay members in the 1925 police and 1937 fire departments, often referred to as the old plans. In these pensions, the city still actually cuts a monthly pension payment to all of those pensioners and widows. We're down to, I think it's a little bit under 100 total between police and fire combined, but we actually pay the monthly payment for those. And then we also put in that budget where the police and fire active or 77 fund members, when they retire and stay on the insurance, that's how we budget for them, is through that fund. So all expenses that are in that fund are budgeted to ensure that the pensioners and widows will receive full payments each month, and it's budgeted fully for each member. So there's not going to be any shorting there. It was discovered that both of those funds have very healthy cash balances coming into 2025, and the decision was made to not allocate as much money into those funds, which would have resulted in larger cash balances tying up the funds that could be better utilized elsewhere. Even with the reduced levy amounts, both cash balances will remain extremely healthy after all expenses are incurred, leaving a 57.1% cash balance in police and a 24% cash balance in fire. We strive for 15%. So in fact, both cash balances will still have increases over 2025 when all is said and done at the end of the year. The city will still be allocating an additional over $500,000 to the 77 fund, which is where the current police and fire and ones that have retired since '77 get paid out of. That money goes to the state, and then the state is the one that's physically cutting monthly payment checks to those retirees once they retire. So that's their, we're pushing the pension business over to the state. Once the 25 plan and the 37 plan that we fund, those will eventually go away as some of these retirees are getting a little bit older. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
So where do the monies come from for the money that the 77s Act has paid out of?
Out of the general fund.
Out of the general?
Yep, there's a line item in both police budget and the fire budget that budgets, it's based on the certified salary. We calculate what the total amount is going to be, and that increase that's happening there is due to raises on base pay, and the state incrementally will increase the amount that the city is required to pay, and that's going from 20.3% in '25 to 23.3% in '26 for each member that's in those departments.
Mr. President, so the point of that was to understand that we're not taking money away from police and fire pensions, actually putting more in. The current pension, the 77 fund, where any officer or firefighter that was hired since '77 is in that fund. And these two funds, the levy goes into seven different funds that she's talking about that goes into those funds, and there's five other funds that need those funds more than having excess in those funds. But we're still putting over $500,000 more in police and fire pensions in '26. Every year that increases because it's based upon salaries and their longevity. So at the end of the day, the point is, the news article should be that we're continuing to invest in pension for police and firefighters and actually increasing that amount every year.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Not the one from 100 years ago.
Any additional questions or comments? Yes, sir.
So my question from last week was, do you need the union, the two unions, the fire and the police, to come together or for their involvement in any of this?
I don't believe so. It's just a matter of the monies that's going in that's ultimately going to land in the cash balance.
So my other question is that if these pension funds are going to fill a deficit in the Richmond Parks Department, correct?
Not necessarily. That levy flows into seven different funds, so that dollar amount in the levy...
Yep. So in our committee of the whole meetings, I believe that we understood that those two pension monies were going to be sent to the Parks Department, and that has changed over the last couple of days?
$300,000 is going to go to the Parks Department. Whether it comes out of the pension fund or any of the general fund, we have found some budget savings. The money is going to go to the Parks Department, but not necessarily directly from the pension.
So, Mr. President, my question is, how can council try to understand the budget when we're moving or kind of on the fly picking where these monies are coming from when we were presented one thing, and now the terminology is, you know, technically, no, or not, not really, or, I mean, these are taxpayer dollars, and how can we vote on a budget that's unbalanced when we're shooting at a moving target? I think that's unresponsible. Mayor, do you have any comment on that?
Just that the levy goes into a lot of different funds, and you can't track exactly $1 going here or there because it's one pot of money that gets split up all these different ways.
I personally can't vote for a budget that is utilizing this kind of math.
Fortunately, the DLGF does not give us our, and it is an estimated levy amount that we have to force, basically, our numbers to be able to get, whether it be a balanced budget or a funded budget. Unfortunately, with the cuts that we've had to face, getting it balanced is going to be impossible.
So...
But getting it funded is what we're striving for.
So, Mr. President, a follow-up question is that with the head of the Parks Department here, I understood last week that these $300,000 were going to be going to the Parks Department, and now, it sounds like that has changed. And so has the Parks Department budget changed since the committee of the whole meet? So you don't necessarily know.
$300,000 is included in her budget numbers. It's currently included in what she's seen at the committee of the whole.
But the mayor just said that not, it might not go that way.
I'm not sure if I know how to explain this properly.
From that same levy, there's over $500,000 going into the 77 fund. So we're not really moving money, it's in the budget that way.
What you're taking...
So you might not have it.
No.
Or you might. So, and if you all can vote on that, that's great.
Unfortunately, you took my note that was seen on there as going to the Parks Department that, I don't know how to explain this properly. The $300,000 is going to the Parks Department. Now, whether it comes out of the, that $300,000 that's coming out of the pension is going to go either to Parks, or it's going to go to the general fund, and then the general fund will have to send it to Parks. They're going to get it. They have to.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Any additional comments or questions?
Mr. President? My question is, we're talking about the pension fund of, pension funds of the fire department and the police department. Have we talked to them about how they feel about taking money from their pension fund and putting it elsewhere, and what is the unions saying about it? And the next question is, if we do this this year, how do we expect, you know, for the 2026, how do we expect to ever get a balanced budget? Because the same thing may come up next year, and we keep doing that, and funding will be depleted. So we, in being a good steward, we need to start being better stewards of what we have and actually set and take the time to do this budget so that it can be balanced rather than funded. I'm agreeing with...
I think what the council needs to understand is, the money that we're talking about in the pension fund is property tax money. We get an amount from property tax every year. It is divided amongst seven, seven different departments?
That one, yes. Well, that levy is.
Yes. Divided between seven different departments. The city can determine how much money goes into each department off of that bucket. That's what we're talking about, is just reducing that amount and putting it somewhere else. The levy doesn't change, the property tax doesn't change. The only thing that's changing is where we're putting it. These two funds, over time, are going to go away. The retirees are dropping off. We're not going to add anything to it, but in time, it will actually be, they'll go away completely. So we're not hurting the fund. In fact, we're still putting money in the fund. $150,000 is just a portion of what's available. So each fund is actually adding to their cash balance, not as much, but it is adding to their cash balance.
Okay, again, my point is this. We're relying on something that's temporary, you're just saying, that may go away. So if we should encounter this problem again...
There's no may. It's going to go away. Those two pension funds will...
Okay, they're going to go away. They're temporary. So...
If I may, they're not temporary. They were started in 1925 and 1937.
I understand, but for right now, it's, they're not, I'm understanding her to say it's not ongoing.
Eventually, there'll be no drawdowns from those funds, just through natural causes.
So there's, then there will be no money to rely on to fund. I mean, I'm not sure if I'm making sense, but in my head, I'm making sense. So it's going to go away. So if 2027, we have the same issue, we'll have to, we're going to do it again? I mean, it just seems like we need to get a way that we can be better stewards of the funding that we have and to be able to balance the budget rather than just it being funded, using some money that was thrown here and there, which we didn't realize we were going to get.
Well, we're actually limited to what funds we do get.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we are limited. Unfortunately, with the cost of living, and of course, we have unions that insist on increases, which is not a bad thing. I mean, I would, I'd want money, too. There's a lot of things that are going into that that is going to limit us drastically in getting a balanced budget.
Mr. President?
Mr. Burkhardt?
I'm sorry, were you done, Dr. Burkhardt?
No, yeah, I'm done right now.
And maybe, maybe I'd feel better about this because I am tracking what you're saying, is that, you know, as we know with union contracts and the specific union contracts that are ahead of us, I think that the appropriate, a more appropriate use would be being able to supplement some of that, some of that old fund income to our current officer increases. And from what I'm hearing is that because we don't have to, we don't need to talk with each one of the representatives from the union. I just think that the most important part about this presentation isn't necessarily, it's really about the overall picture, and the overall picture being, we have nothing to grasp or to vote on in this budget. Because I understand estimates, and I understand as they come together based on last year or the look back. But how can we, how can we even understand ourselves when we're taking out of one pocket and putting the other, and it may or may not? And if this were a for-profit business, it'd be out of business, in my opinion.
Mr. President? Mr. Purcell?
Yeah, I was going to save some of this for later, but first of all, I want everyone to understand that the 25 and 37 Acts, that the firefighters and police officers in that act get the raises that the current members get. So there will be an increase constantly according to the raises that our people get. Now, the 77 Acts does not work that way. The state determines the raises for the people in the 77th Act. So what I'm trying to point out here is, is that if we're going to maintain police and firefighters, we're seriously going to have to look at their pay scales. We're losing a lot to other departments, et cetera, after spending a fortune training them. So as that goes up, obviously, the needs of this money, until it is or does go away, and it will when they all basically die off, that we can't project what that amount will be. And I see a difference of 1.5 million in reserve in the police and $500,000 reserve basically in the fire, so I don't see any correlation here in what that line is that we're looking for before we continue to put money or do not continue to put money in those funds. That's the first thing I'll say. Second thing I'll say is on the balanced budget as opposed to a funded budget. I can be honest right here tonight and say I will not vote for an unbalanced budget. I don't know how anyone else in this line feels, but what I look at here is, we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul. We've got a balance at the end of this year that we didn't expect of, I don't know, we've had different discussions, 1.5, 1.9, 2.4, I don't know what it is because that number has floated with all other numbers.
1.5.
1.5, thank you. We just borrowed 2.4 million in a bond issue, and we're going to pay back 6 million. To me, if this is my household, I'm not going to take that 1.5 million and subsidize an unbalanced budget. I'm going to pay down that bond so that I don't have to wait 20 years to get the tax dollars, so that over a short time, if we start using these under expenditures to pay down bonds, we will have a steady cash flow and a higher tax income to where we can balance our budget. But we're never going to get there if we keep robbing Peter to pay Paul. Does that make sense? I mean, I know you don't agree with me, and that's fine, but we could be getting money, tax income, off of this building immediately if the next two years, we have these kinds of savings and we pay off that $2.4 million bond, and that saves us $4 million over the next 20 years.
We have been working this past week, and Beth is not, oh, there she is. Beth has put a tremendous effort, as well as myself, into finding revenue, and that means that we found budget savings for 2025. Many of the ordinances that you have are being presented tonight affect the 2025 budget and will enable us grasp that 1.5 million. It's there. We just have to do our additional appropriations so we can use it.
Right. And in that, as I look through it, we're taking out of the fire department EMS reserves around $600,000?
I'd have to look.
So actually, we don't have 1.9 because we're taking out of reserves $600,000. So that is to help us get more other savings when we could pay it with our savings instead of going into those reserves.
Right. One of the things we did on our budget savings, we were able to find about $188,000 that will not be, will not be used by December 31st. So we were, we are able to create those additional appropriations to take those funds and use them to help supplement and get to that, cover that $1.5 million. And we have other things going on, too.
I understand all of that, but I think my points are still valid. I have been breaking down the budget page by page all week, and I will continue to do so until we pass this budget. But what I also see in this budget is a large reduction in a lot of the smaller departments' overall budgets. And what I see is, is a payroll to pay people without the money for them to be able to do their job when I look at this budget. I see a code enforcement department that doesn't have money to do code enforcement and tear down buildings, et cetera, et cetera, at the rate we need because we've cut their budget so much, but yet we've got this huge payroll paying these people to do what?
Right. And the only alternative is, is to reduce the payroll. I mean, if that's the route that you choose to go, then, I mean, we can do that.
Mr. President, when we meet with Finance Committee in sometime this week, or at least a long one next Monday, we'll go through the $2,482,000 increase is just in personnel services and negotiated contracts. So right at just under $2.5 million of our unbalanced, busy, union-negotiated payroll increases. That's something... That's something we need to just talk about in Finance Committee. How do we make that up?
Any additional comments? Thanks, everybody. One of the things we didn't, we failed to do is, we haven't had a roll call yet.
That's right.
Wish you all down is here.
The clerk has us all as being here, so I guess we can move on. Ordinances on first reading, Mr. Turner.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to suspend the rules and take ordinances 38 through 49 on in first reading and title only.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and read ordinances 38 through 49 by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried.
Ordinance number 38, 2025, an appropriation ordinance amending the 2025 budget.
Ordinance, let's see, you're doing 38 first?
Yes.
Yes.
This is a transfer amending the 2025 budget. These are funds that we are transferring within the general fund. There are two primary, 188,000, $188,922, and then another at $400,000.
Questions from council? Comments? Sign to the Finance Committee.
Ordinance number 39, 2025, an appropriation ordinance to be known as the 2026 budget.
This is the first reading of the 2026 budget, as was presented at Committee of the Whole.
I'll answer questions.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just to reiterate, because if I heard the mayor correctly, the 2026 budget is funded, but it's unbalanced by 2.4 million. Did I hear that correctly?
I'll have to find it again.
48.
My last count was, this is a general fund, 2,344,000, so actually less than that 2.4.
I just, I wanted to go on record and make sure that we all understood that.
Just 3 million in savings is here to fund that.
It's unbalanced by 2.3. Thank you.
Sign to the Finance Committee.
Ordinance number 40, 2025, an appropriation ordinance fixing the annual compensation of all elected city officers for 2026.
I'll answer questions. To Finance.
Ordinance number 41, 2025, an appropriation ordinance to be known as the 2026 salary ordinance.
I'll answer questions. To Finance.
Ordinance number 42, 2025, an ordinance authorizing the annual compensation and benefits of Richmond police officers.
Comments or questions? To Finance.
Ordinance number 43, 2025, an appropriation ordinance to be known as the sanitary district 2026 salary ordinance.
Any questions or comments on the finances? On the salary ordinance? To Finance.
Ordinance number 44, 2025, an ordinance authorizing the annual compensation and benefits for Richmond firefighters.
Again, comments or questions?
Ordinance number 46, an appropriation ordinance amending the 2025 budget.
This is for Roseview.
Pardon me?
For Roseview, 46, it's the appropriation ordinance amending for Roseview.
Any questions from council? To Finance.
Ordinance number 47, 2025, an appropriation ordinance amending the 2025 budget.
This?
Opioid fund.
This is the opioid fund? To Finance.
Ordinance number 48, 2025, an appropriation ordinance amending the 2025 budget for responders.
I'll answer questions.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
First response?
EMS.
Thank you.
Additional comments? To Finance.
Ordinance number 49, 2025, an appropriation ordinance amending the 2025 budget, the general fund.
I'll answer questions. To Finance. Finance Committee has a big job ahead of them. When will you be meeting?
Mr. President? Monday.
Monday? What time?
Be determined. I'll let the?
This is going to take quite a few hours. You think?
We'll figure it out.
You think you can get it done?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions before we close?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to note that we just took out of reserve monies with these ordinances if they pass $1.2 million to supplement the 2025 budget, so I don't know how we can say that we're saving money. Thank you.
Okay. Any unfinished business come before us at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Our second reading will be at our regular meeting, which will be Monday, October the 6th. And now we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Please stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.